We will begin now the second round of questions. I'm gonna, for purpose of the rules and games, I'll just repeat it so that everybody understands, or is reminded of it. We will have two rounds of questions. We will be going to our second round. Will each Senator allotted five minutes for questions? And it does not include within the five minutes the response from the panel. Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. A member who uses the member's time on a question, uses all that member's time on that question, and may not later speak, even if all the time you was not use. Okay, after completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill. Amendments to each bill will be entertained after the two rounds of questions. When we get to that round, you either can introduce an amendment, or you can make comments to the bill. All right? And then after we complete the amendments or the comments, we will proceed, we will have a recommendation for the bill to be sent to the committee, and then we will move to the next bill. On our next bill will be Bill 153, which, dash 36, was in reference to the DOC buildup, funding. Okay, materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive, folder labeled 9.28.21, Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendment must be submitted writing to the clerk via email, 36glsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. My colleagues, you have time to get it in. After we're done with the second round, and we're in the amendment portion, I will advise everybody, there's no amendment, it's not, it's in route. You've got time to do it during the question period. And after we complete the amendments to each bill, then I'll entertain the most surprise from the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. We will begin now the second round of questions, or, yeah, questions. Senator Peter Turley, I will start with you. We have, we have a few colleagues that are not here. When they do arrive, we will catch up with them real fast before we get to the last one, would be you speaker. So as we go around, it's like Senator Blas arrives, and there's Senator Clint Magel, Senator Talina Nelson, Senator Duñez, we will go to them before we continue on in the order we're, we're in the flow. Senator Peter Turley, do you have any questions? None? Senator Telo Tidigwe, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Good morning to the panel and my colleagues. For GIDEA, has the proposed property for the hospital been secured by DOD? Has it been secured?
As of yet, no, it has not, Senator. The expectation is that the authorization to proceed will be in October with a license.
To proceed in October, okay, so we have October, okay.
Yes.
GIDEA stands to make about $30 million of the closing of this deal, if the, if it was successful. Meaning, you know, on page nine, it says that you'll be receiving 5% of the amount of, so the 600 million, I mean, yeah, 600 million, GIDEA will receive 5%. That accumulates to about $30 million. On page nine, it lists a thing, the things that you are supposed to pay for. Will that money be going to paying for that on page nine? Line four?
I'm sorry, can you, would you mind repeating the question, Senator, relative to the, I guess, the second part of your question? Page nine, you said GIDEA stands to receive 5% of the total cost of the contract for project supervision, and then after that, you were asking-
Line four?
Line four.
A list?
Okay.
Of the responsibilities. Will you be using that funding to pay for that?
The way I read the language of this bill is that it will be used to pay for the scope of work of consults, line six, seven, eight, nine?
Yes.
So yes?
Okay. And how much funding will you have after you've paid for this?
That's unclear, Senator, because I think that the scope of work of the consultant or consultants that's covered under this transaction is not inclusive of the scope covering, rather, I'm sorry, I miss, I miss speaking on that. The scope of work, it, I think, I don't think I can give you a number right now as far as the end result, because the scope of work of the consultants, I'm not sure what they would cover based off of this, based off of this bill alone, if we're just, if we're covering the hospital, then the consultants would be covering the hospital. But if we're covering public health and behavioral, et cetera, then there's likely to be other costs associated, and whether or not that's covered through this, or through grant funding, or through other types of funding, then it would likely be covered from those respective sources.
So then you wouldn't be covering the cost on some of them? So, okay, for GIDEA stands to make about $30 million, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Senator, I'm, I guess, I'm, I've never really looked at what GIDEA stands to make in relation to this bill. Generally, GIDEA makes-
5%.
Certain basis points off of the closing, and the size of the closing does not warrant 30 million, a $30 million fee. This 5%, I was associating with the construction, the actual construction cost, the project management office, but I would ask for clarification from the author of the bill on this?
Yes, please, because it says, let me read it for the record, "There is hereby appropriated to GIDEA an amount not to exceed more than 5% of the total cost of the contract for the project supervision, which includes covering the cost of the hospital development consultant, consultants, which be provided by the program management office." So you stand to receive 5%, 5% of the amount, and if the amount that we're looking at is 600 million, that's $30 million. But please, you know, confer and find out for sure, so we can get a response.
Okay.
Well, maybe later, I mean, if someone else-
I mean, I think that perhaps the author of the bill can address their intent in this.
Senator Telo, what is your, your reason for asking about the 30 million that they could get? Don't you want to just explain it all? Because if you read the bill, it talks about 5%, and it tells you exactly what they're gonna cover. So if you can explain to our colleagues and to the people of Guam exactly, what is your, what is your motive for, for questioning GIDEA's, what they're gonna be paying for?
I'm not the author of, I'm not the author of this legislation, Mr. Chair, you are.
I'm the author, Senator Telo, and I'm asking you-
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
I don't understand.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm just responding to it, okay? And I just wanted to know what's your hidden agenda, because-
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motives of the senators, hidden agendas, it's completely out of order.
All right, thank you. Follow the bill. Senator Telo.
Well, then I will ask the author of the legislation, because unfortunately, GIDEA doesn't understand this section, Mr. Chair, and since GIDEA is part of this legislation, it's important that they also know and understand.
Senator, amend. Yes, I'm just trying to understand the question. The bill is very specific, hereby appropriate for GIDEA, so GIDEA can manage the whole project. So I'm trying to understand what is the, what's the basis for the question? The bill is very specific, hereby appropriated to GIDEA, amount not to exceed the 5% of the total cost of contract for, I mean, I don't need to read it down, everybody has a copy of the bill, they can all read it on for themselves. So I'm trying to understand where, where we're going with this, with GIDEA. GIDEA's handled more than just this project, they've handled many projects, and their percentage has always generally been the same. I'm trying to make sure that they're fully compensated for what they need to do to take care of the people of Guam. Hopefully, that suffices, and that answers the question.
Thank you, Senator Sinagustian. Senator Tidigwe?
Well, does that satisfy GIDEA? Meli, is that your interpretation of this, or do you still have that question, whether you're gonna receive 5% of the amount of this contract?
Senator, the way I read it is, by my interpretation of this law, or of this bill, is that 5% is appropriated to GIDEA for the purpose of project management, for hiring consultants, et cetera. So by and large, GIDEA is functioning as a pass-through, and, I mean, it's, you're sure, we're willing to undertake that, we've undertaken in other projects, other types of construction projects for the government of Guam.
Mel, 5% of what?
Will there be anything left? I'm not sure. It's hard to say. We have, we have overseen the projects, including, a number of projects, including the museum, the farmers' co-op, et cetera, and there's nothing left from those after, after the, after the dust settles and the transaction is complete.
Those are very small projects, but the 5% of what? What are we 5% of? What's your interpretation of that?
5% of the total cost of the contract, 5% of the total cost of the contract is what I'm reading.
And what is the total cost of the contract?
The total cost of the contract is, I believe, what is authorized, from the way I'm reading it, is what is authorized under the legislation, which is the, what the 35 million appropriation will allow as far as borrowing.
Well, see, here's my concern. One, we're not looking at borrowing, because there's a debt ceiling, and of course, it exceeds a debt ceiling. So my question is, is your interpretation, the $600 million, that's the 5% that's gonna be a tag to it?
No, I don't believe so, Senator, primarily because, as we had discussed yesterday, in a lease-leaseback, there's a portion of it that is, there's a portion that is set aside for operating and for manager, for operating and maintenance, O and M. And so it would be the amount that's, the final amount, based on prevailing interest rates, based on, on the estimate, project estimates, et cetera.
It's still a bit unclear. Hopefully, another question will be asked to revamp on that. You mentioned yesterday, Mel, that, you know, the cart before the horse, you brought that up. Would you say that it would be difficult to move forward in approaching any company at this point, knowing that the funds will not be in our hands? Even if we were to pass this bill in the next three weeks, would it be difficult to approach any company to take on this project, knowing that the government of Guam doesn't That was a question for you, Mel.
I'm sorry, Senator, will you please repeat the question?
Yesterday, Mel, you mentioned, you brought up the cart before the horse, and considering before us today, this legislation, not having the EITC funding, which is the basis of this in front of us, and approaching a company, you know, because of course, GIDEA's gonna go out and search for these contractors and stuff, approaching a company with no funding in your hand currently, or not even revenue tax, knowing when it's gonna come, or what the guidelines are, how are you gonna pursue a company right now, even if the bill were to pass next month, to take on this project?
Thank you for that question, Senator. I believe that the, the pledge of the funding under the, under the, is it the CARES Act? Under ARP? Yeah. The pledge of the funding under the ARP is generally sufficient as a source document when going out for the, it's the reliability of payment. Yes, we may not have the money in hand, but the reliability of payment is there, because the reliability of payment is coming from the federal government. So we don't anticipate that that would be, I guess, to answer your question, we don't anticipate that that would be an issue with regard to talking to investors about the pledge source of payment, repayment.
Can you repeat that again?
The EITC is authorized by legislation, right? Congress, by, I'm not familiar, it's under ARP, under, by Congress, and so therefore, that is used as the source document, it's a very reliable source of repayment, the federal government is a reliable source of repayment, and then, and with that, we would go out to the market, and, and, it's, the federal government, if you think about it, borrowing, historical borrowing that's been done, the hotel occupancy tax, the hot bond, was done based on projections as far as what our tourism was going, how our tourism was going to perform in the future. And so in a similar, I would say that EITC as pledge from the federal government is a more reliable between the two, if I were comparing them.
Mel, why 600 million? How did you come up with that money, that amount?
Well, again, Senator, I was not the author of the, of the legislation here, and so as you've been attending task force meetings, et cetera, you've been, you've been made aware of the replacement cost of the Guam Memorial Hospital, inclusive of some escalation, and less the 300 million or so that the governor has, has pledged that she'd use to support the reconstruction of a hospital. And so I think that that's where the, I think that that's where the 600 came from, but I would, I would pose that question to the author of the legislation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pose that question to the author.
Senator Sinagustian, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Chair. Colleagues, we need to remind ourselves, from the beginning when we introduced this bill, the discussion that deals with the hospital was reported out by the Army Corps of Engineers, started out with the 660-plus million dollars, to state that it's to, I guess, restructure, reconfigure the hospital the way it is today, but the total cost was estimated about 643, a lot less, to build a new hospital. And then as we were moving along, we were trying to identify a funding source that GIDEA, the government can go after, to provide financing to build the hospital, and to build also public health and Guam behavioral. So the amount of 600 is, is just an estimate of, of as they're moving along, I, that was not, not something that the bill, bill is strictly just to find a financing solution, and that's where we identified 35 minutes.
Senator Tidigwe?
Thank you to the author for that answer. My question to DOA, page nine, there's a study to be, on page nine, there's a study to be conducted, which will cost $1 million, and it's identified that this funding will come from the general fund. Where are you gonna take this out of, out of the general fund? What account or what department are you planning on taking that money out, or can ARP funding cover this?
Senator, thank you. I think the funding in the bill provides for that, because the bill provides for 35 million, and I had assumed that the 1 million would come, would be appropriated from the 35 million that's already in this bill and in the budget bill, and therefore, it wouldn't affect any individual department.
Actually, it says it's gonna come from the general fund, it's not gonna come from the, the borrowing of this funding, or the leaseback of this money, it says a general fund.
Yes, that's the 35 million that the budget provided for, and that's a general fund appropriation.
My next question is to DRT, Daphne. Is there a sufficient funds placed in reserve to cover the EITC in FY 2022 and all other tax refunds other than the ACT and the CTC in the FY 2022 budget? Did we set aside enough funding? Or, yeah, that's, I guess that's the first question.
Are you referring to the provision for tax refunds?
Yes, ma'am.
With regards to the provision for tax refunds, you know, the numbers there, with regards to like the EITC and also the CTC and the ACTC, those figures actually are based on historical amounts that we have paid out. And so, you know, we did provide that to the OFB as a basis for the budget document. So again, based on history, we believe that those amounts will be sufficient. As I did mention, though, I think during the budget hearing, if you recall, because of the increase in the child tax credit, we expect that that 35 million will actually be higher than what we see there. And again, we know now that we received $93 million for what is now sitting as the 35 plus 26. So I mean, in terms of the amounts, again, perhaps, of course, we, especially, I think, in, because we did not know how much we were going to get from the federal government at the time that the initial discussions of the budget was going to happen. You know, of course, we were being conservative and we used historical estimates. But the reality is that the 35 plus 26 now is probably like in the 90 million instead of, you know, this about 60 million range. So again, based on historical information, the 55, the 35 and the 26, and also the 145 that we normally project for the total refunds. I mean, again, you know, to the best of our knowledge, we believe that those are going to be, those are the best estimates that we had, of course, at the time that the budget was prepared.
Okay. The question actually I had was, how much funding has been set aside in FY 2022 for tax refunds, not including the ACT, CTC, the 93? Just take that out of the equation and incorporate everything else? So it might be better for me to ask the question, how much tax refunds did we pay, subtracting the ACT, the CTC, in FY 2020? And then, so what I'm getting at here?
Okay, so historically, if you just, and even if you just look at the numbers, right, and we look at the 145 and the 55 and the, I guess, around 60 or 50 or 60 million for the child tax credit, historically, EITC has been about a third of our total refunds. Also, historically, our CTC and our ACTC has been probably a little bit over a third of our total refunds. So between the two of them, that's about two-thirds of our total refunds that have been paid out, which means then that the difference is going to be actual amounts that people, they get withheld from their payroll that is in excess of how much their liability is. Yeah, but the majority of the monies, again, two-thirds of it, are related to EITC and the ACT, or, sorry, EITC and the child tax credit.
With regards to paying the tax refunds starting in January, if we don't receive the EITC funding that's going to be given to us for tax year FY 21, is there enough funding that's been set aside in the FY 22 budget to pay for that EITC funding? I mean, EITC tax refunds?
I would have to defer the cash flow discussion to probably DOA.
Okay, DOA, please.
Thank you.
Well, Senator, let me, I guess, say from the very beginning is that I'm sure that Director Shimizu will make sure that doesn't happen. I mean, we're all very well aware that EITC, as she just said, is a large proportion of the tax refunds. And if it's required that these payments be made, I am sure she will work with the IRS to make sure that these refunds, the EITC part of the refund is received, as indeed she has done with all the other programs that the IRS are required to fund us. So if, if in January, that hasn't happened, I am sure we will begin to pay refunds, just as we have done in the past, in the anticipation of, because it's a legal requirement, in the anticipation of receiving these EITC refunds from the federal government.
That's very noble and appreciated, but will you have the funding based on the FY budget that we passed? Enough funding without dipping into another account?
Well, I can't look into the future, Senator. I don't know what the cash flows are going to be during the course of the next few months. Let's hope that's the case. And we will certainly, both of us here, as indeed the rest of the government, work to make sure that is the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Burn, for that. My time is up, but, you know, you hit it on the nose. You don't know what the cash flow is going to be all about, and we're anticipating something not, you know.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up with Public Health from yesterday and my inquiry onto the $30 million for your laboratory, whether that had to be, the property had to be site-controlled or owned by the government of Guam should this facility be built up in Eagles Field?
Thank you for that question, Senator. I know we're referring to the CDC Public Health Lab because that's the building that's going to be built. I did briefly speak with leadership this morning, and from what I understand, they're still under discussion. This is something that they're going to explore, and they will, I will get back to you with that answer.
Thank you. And what would be the fallback or plan B? Should that not be able to work out for Eagles Field? And it would have to be site-owned or owned, property owned by Public Health?
From what I understand, Eagles Field is the ideal location to build the Public Health Lab because it's close to the public, to the hospital and to behavioral health. But if that isn't possible, then the alternate location could be the public health, the former Public Health property in Manila, or where the building was, where we were located, which is currently vacant.
Was there any, any plans in Public Health to either re-renovate that facility for the central Public Health building again? Or is there plans just to demolish it and rebuild? What is going on with the Manila facility?
So with the Manila facility, from what I understand, it's, it is currently vacant. I know there was discussion about demolishing the building or potentially having another government of Guam agency utilize the facility. I'm not sure what the final answer is on that question, Senator, but the staff who were initially all located at that facility back in 2019, prior to the electrical fire, are currently displaced and were scattered throughout the island. And one of the things we're trying to do is consolidate. So there also was talk about rebuilding that facility and potentially using that property to build the new Public Health building. But these are all just discussions. There's nothing finalized or, at this moment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, if I may, reserve the remaining of my time of four minutes and five seconds for any panel members that are missing that I may have a question for? And that will be only to the panel members that are, that is currently not present.
I'm sorry, are you asking to reserve your time for a later time?
Yes, for the panel member that is not currently present.
I believe the rules of engagement are you can use your time at your time or yield your time to another.
I see. So if they're not here, how am I gonna?
Oh, I'm sorry, someone who's not here?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
They're currently not present.
Who are you requesting for?
For the Department of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness that was here yesterday.
I see.
Is not here today. So that's why I'm asking if I would be able...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So would I be able to remain, use my remaining time?
Yes, I will allow it, and I'll inform the chair when he returns.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I did want to ask, just to get further clarification, because I, I mean, for me, as I mentioned yesterday, I'm more inclined to supporting, funding the hospital and not so much open at this point with regards to public health or to behavioral health as being part of a single campus, just because I'm looking at the bigger cost factor. And how can we finance? Because, I mean, if we're going to venture into one of our largest bond financing projects, and then again, of course, if things work out and the governor's able to use her current federal funds of 300-plus, and if she's able to get another 300-plus, wonderful, that helps us. But if that doesn't happen, and the expectation is that the taxpayers of Guam collectively are going to shoulder this, is it affordable? And so has the administration looked at options? So in the event we're not looking at a campus, because goodness, even the University of Guam wasn't built overnight. That was a process of many, many years to get it to where it currently is at. Maybe later, if the opportunity and finances are available, that can be pursued. But with regards to the hospital, are there alternative sites that don't require something as large as Eagle Field? Because I potentially see major issues with, you know, historical landowners of that property, even if the military were to transfer. That's not going to sidestep that issue publicly. So are there other alternatives of property that government of Guam has that it can be looked at to accommodate a hospital facility, including the former Oka Point? Has that been explored?
Thank you, Senator. Yes, we've, we have explored, of course, Eagles Field was identified as the, as the site that, that everybody wants. To address your question about affordability, I think, rather than discussing alternative sites, I would just, what the administration has discussed is a phased approach towards building, where the building is done in such a way that is affordable and not something where everything has to be going up all at the same time. So one of the, one of the discussions has been to do a phased approach with Public Health, with, they do have grant funding with, under the agency formerly known as the Office of Economic Adjustment, they have $32 million for a CDC lab. With this financing, with some of the governor's other monies, or with the governor, with the, I'm sorry, the ARP monies potentially, I know that the, the idea was to look at GMH first, but that doesn't skirt around the fact that we likely need to do infrastructure. It makes sense to do infrastructure for all instead of infrastructure for the hospital. And then later on, you know, as we all know, there's the inconvenience of putting in a perfectly good road and then breaking it up because we're building something new. And you have deep knowledge of that, I know. And so that was, that was like, that was why we were looking at it from the broader perspective for the medical campus. But yes, of course, looking at it from a phased approach as to what's affordable with GMH being in need of immediate replacement and so on.
And with regards to the cost of financing, what if, what if the ARP money is not available? What if, what if things take a downturn further and we don't get, you know, more money from the US government? And looking at the current situation in Congress debating, rating, you know, raising the debt ceiling? If that, if that's not available, and yet the demand locally to recover from this pandemic is there, and the money has to get diverted from what her desired option is, how much are we looking at? I mean, I know we're looking perhaps, you know, lease-to-own process, but, you know, still something that people are going to have to pay for. What is our, what is our capacity of how much we're capable of borrowing and meeting our own limitations of our own debt ceiling that we have? Yeah, I don't want to roll the dice and go, oh, this is what we can get for 35 million a year, and yet not know, you know, to what degree the size and construction and capability and service of that facility is going to be available. So what latitude do we have left with our current obligations that we have on the table in the event that federal money can't, or is not able to use because of other pressing demands?
There is, Senator, future debt obligation, there is an amount available for future debt obligation, approximately 350 million. So there's that. But I think the long and short of it is that you build what you can afford. And so if what is authorized, if other things fall through, then it becomes an exercise of really trying to achieve the number of beds and meeting the needs of the healthcare system today and potentially not building it to the scope of meeting the healthcare needs. I think really when, in the design of this healthcare, in the design of the healthcare campus, again, we're looking at the medical needs of the island of Guam going forward for the next 30 or 40 years, but perhaps we don't need the last 30, the last 15 years just yet, and that can wait. And so with that, to continue and concurrently aggressively continue to go after grant funding to continue to build, that's something, but at the end of the day, you build what you can afford. But I would defer to, if any of my colleagues want to answer, with regard to affordability from other components of the government?
Senator, I think the administrator is correct that you build what you can afford, but that doesn't stop you from trying to find funding from as many sources as you can. And as we spoke about yesterday, the administration is seeking funding from a number of other sources, including, as you heard yesterday, the US Treasury, in order to maximize the amount, because we want to provide a facility, as it says, for the 21st century and not just for a few years. So, and I think everybody that we speak to in the federal government is aware of that.
No, I appreciate it. At the same time, I just want to make sure we can afford it because I don't know economically where we're going to be a year or two from now or three, at least of all 15 or 20. When we, we obligate ourselves to these financial responsibilities, they're long-term and they don't disappear. And certainly, we want to make sure they're paid. But again, I also want to make sure what we're going to get. If we're going to put the infrastructure for potential future build, that's going to add a bigger price tag to just the hospital itself versus locating in another area where infrastructure is more readily available and it's much cheaper to do that. What are we looking at then? Are we looking at $35 million for the next 40 years? Are we looking at $70 million? What is the proposal that the administration's looking at, wanting the legislature to approve?
Per the, per the bill, it's 35 million a year for the next 30, 30 years? 30 to 40 years? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Senator. I can, for up to 40 years.
So 35 million for up to 40 years. And then one last question for this round. Is this something that we need all upfront? I mean, if, again, I don't know ultimately the procurement process of what's going to be desired here, if it's, if it is going to be with Army Corps, is that going to be a formal agreement from government, from government to government? Sorry, my other boss. Government to government, or however it is? What is the initial seed money? Is 35 million needed today? Or is it something needed a year or two from now, once we have more concrete plans in place, that we actually know what we're funding? Because right now, we don't have funds. I mean, we don't, we have an idea of what the administration's looking at in terms of site location, but with regards to...
Once the license is obtained for the land, we do have a list of items that we'd like to take care of in the immediate, and these include some site survey type of work in addition to some preliminary infrastructure type of work. We're still finalizing some numbers, but what we're looking at is, again, some site surveys and GPA, GWA, and roads as well.
Do we have a figure of what we're looking at in the next year or two versus us authorizing 35 million for this upcoming fiscal year? Because if it's not needed for all that in the initial planning, of course, why would we want to use it for that? Because we're already going to start paying, the moment we enter into this agreement, we're going to start paying. I'm just asking for the initial year or two, because obviously, it's going to take time to design it and do the other survey work of the property and things of that nature before we're actually able to break ground and address construction.
Yes.
How are we dealing with it in the next couple of years versus simply authorizing $35 million today in this, in this bill, moving forward in the next couple of years before we actually get a structure that's going to be, you know, constructed?
I, what's, I think what's important to, to understand is that the planning charrette that's expected to take two years or what was reported is for the medical campus in its entirety, whereas this is specific to the hospital and, or rather, I'm sorry, whereas we do have a list of items that are specific to the infrastructure and the site overall, but also construction associated specifically with the hospital.
Okay, with my 26 seconds, I'm going to ask again, what, what is the amount that we're looking at that's actually needed upfront versus going ahead and authorizing up to $35 million with the passage of this legislation? How much do we need in the initial year or two for the charrette or whatever the case may be to do the planning and design, site location assessments and things of that nature for the facility, initial facility?
We would like to utilize the entire 35 million upfront for the purpose of site survey, site prep work in addition to infrastructure work. GPA has given us a figure of a... GPA has given us a figure of approximately 15 million. We also have done some historicals as far as site prep work that we've done in the past. This is site prep pre, again, this is prior to the planning sharet of about $1 million. We have not yet received a figure from GWA, but we anticipate that GWA will be more expensive than GPA based off of the current limitations of the backroads to Minilau water system. And so, we are requesting that we have available access to the entire 35 million in the first year, or as soon as possible.
I know I'm running out of time, Madam Chair, but I would like to ask if the administration can provide us that breakdown, so we can let ourselves and the public know what is the anticipated use of an initial $35 million, if they can provide that. I certainly would like to see that before we address voting on this bill.
Sure. Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Is that a document we have available?
We have a lot of drafts and correspondences. We can kind of assemble in one draft document, one working document?
Yes, we'd appreciate it if you could give that to us today. Thank you. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have questions for the agencies, such as Guam Behavioral Health and Department of Public Health. So we haven't focused a lot on your plans, and I know with the hospital, there's intent to expand their capacity, their bed capacity, and there was talk about, what is it, centric, you know, patient-centric facility. So what is the thought and pre-design ideas that Department of Public Health has in regards to this center? This question through Ms. Tyron.
Thank you, Senator. So with regards to the pre-design for the new public health facility, we do currently have what's called an owner's, OPR, owner's project requirement, and it's a document that all divisions have been working on these past few weeks. And what it does is, it outlines the current staffing that we currently have, the type of, the square footage that we are needing to accommodate not only the staff, but other amenities, such as conference rooms, spaces for bathrooms, waiting rooms. And so, we factored all that into our document, and to also anticipate for a future growth. So we're looking at about, I believe it was somewhere in the range of... Sorry, I have the information with me right here. At least 280,125 square foot is what we're looking at, based on all five divisions. Again, this information is, we continue to update this information, we continue to work together to determine how much square foot is needed by division, and that number will probably change as we move forward.
Is it possible to get that document on the drive, or can we have access to that, to take a look at that?
I do. I can provide that information. I do have that information available, and I can provide that to you, yes.
And is there perhaps a connection to, what would that do to improve the healthcare response?
I'm sorry, Senator, I didn't under, I couldn't hear the question.
So how would the design improve healthcare response? Has that been tied into that document?
How would the design improve healthcare response? So as I mentioned earlier, again, because we're all scattered throughout the villages, and the way that it would improve healthcare response is that all the programs that, or divisions that provide services to our community will be consolidated into one facility. For example, if you wanted to go and meet your social worker to talk about your SNAP, your benefits, public welfare is there, then if you needed to go to the Division of Public Health site to seek other services, it'd be ideally all located in one location. So that's kind of the goal, is to make sure that services are consolidated, people can access our services in a one-stop location. We also have access to our Guam partners, such as the hospital and the behavioral health as well.
All right. I would probably ask the same question of Guam Behavioral Health, but they're currently not present. So if I have any extra time, I would like to use that for that. So the question I have is for GIDEA. So should we not be able to keep up with payments, for whatever reason? What happens to the facility?
It's very hard to repossess a hospital. So, and keeping up with the payments, I would be very, a hospital is different than a public pool, or other types of public structures. A hospital is a critical need, and so, I think before there's non-payment, there are generally payment arrangements that are made. And so, I think that's a very, it's, there's generally legal action and things along those lines, but I think what needs to occur prior to all of that is, if there is difficulty paying, then generally, there's payment plans, then that type of thing that would be made.
Thank you. I know in the document for the four schools that use the same model, I know there's language in there that it could revert to the contractor developer. Would that, would this document have the same language?
It is likely that there would be some type of language that would, that would place a lien on the structure, yes.
Okay. And so, in worst-case scenario, they could end up, we put all this money in, and...
I think that this goes back to, when it comes to repossessing a school, that's a vastly different exercise than repossessing Guam's only public hospital. So, a worst-case scenario like that is, to me, equivalent to World War, a war type of situation. I just, critical infrastructure is critical infrastructure, period. Similar to water, and wastewater, power, things along those lines. Yes, there's difficulty, and difficulty is generally dealt with, but straight-up non-payment is, and straight-up non-payment that would result in repossession of a hospital, that would be, to me, that would be highly unlikely.
Okay. So there is, in other bond borrowings, GWA had mentioned that they thought of doing other types of financing, rather than going directly to bonds, because they have to start paying interest right away. So what is the timing of this, as far as going out for a bond? You know, what is the plan?
The issue for GWA was because they're not planning, because they're attacking what their, their borrowing is being done in phases, and because all the construction is being done over a certain period of time. And so, they were looking at taking advantage of some shorter-term cash management type of products, to be able to hedge, because they're not spending it all in one shot. With the construction of the hospital, the, with this situation, what we're working with is a lease, lease-leaseback type of situation. So with a lease-leaseback situation, as we pledge the money, the design, construction, et cetera, it's kind of a, I mean, the construction of a structure is not drawn out over 10 years or 20 years, it's drawn out over two, potentially. And so, it's a shorter timeframe for turnaround and utilization from design to occupancy of the hospital than it would be in a situation like GWA, where it's in phases.
So, I guess maybe my question too is related to, since according to some of the previous, sorry, excuse me, if you can pause the time for a moment? Can you pause the time? The time is running. Can you pause the time, please? Yeah, I think I can put back some seconds. No, sorry, I was talking to the timekeeper, because it was running, and there was a distraction, so if they can put back a couple of seconds more. So in the document for the four schools, we don't pay until it's occupied, but yet we have to borrow the money before then. At that point, interest, we have to start paying interest at that point. So how is that handled, as far as that interest is concerned?
I'm sorry, Senator, are you referencing that interest is accruing, but we're not paying?
Correct. And how is that handled?
But, what do you mean, how is it handled?
So, in the document for the four schools, we don't pay until we occupy the school, yet we borrow the bond earlier, which means interest is already accruing. So how is that handled as far as the payments go?
It's part, it's, everything is included in the debt service.
Just to clarify, when we borrow, again, whether it's us or GIDEA, they include the cost of construction, because even when we're doing a house or development, you know, you have like a year or two before you actually start paying principal and interest. That's what we would deal with as well. And all of that is incorporated into the payment that we make, the initial payment, that's part of the cost. You know, whenever you're building, and you're allowed to have, you know, a year before you make the first payment, that's all part, built into the structure, and part of the debt service.
Okay. So if there's a delay in the construction, that interest will be accruing, and we would end up paying for that because of there's a delay? So it might not benefit?
If there's a delay in construction, that's a separate agreement that is included, where we would have liquidated damages, and that would be charged to the contractor, if there's a delay in construction. But when we go to the market, we expect that we know who the contractor is and when they're going to start. You know, we would have all of that in place, before we actually borrow. It's just like a house when you're building. You have all the plans and then borrow.
Okay, thank you. So another question I have is the purpose of assignments. In this bill, it talks about the company can assign without the consent of GIDEA. Do you see any issues with that? Without being any kind of consent, should a company assign a project to somebody else?
So to clarify that, the assignment, how we feel about that, it's, the contract is between, the contract, the RFP is awarded, and what occurs in the RFP, if they decide to change one of their vendors, whether it be a trustee, or underwriter, et cetera, that is their call, and they don't need the approval of GIDEA. That's how we, to clarify that statement.
You know, I think there are issues here, because in the bill, it also talks about a reputable company that we're going to choose as a contractor developer, and what happens if a subcontractor is not, does not fit that category, is, you know, I think that's kind of critical, to know who we're doing business with.
Well, the contract between the government of, the contract with the government of Guam is between the prime, if you will, and the prime and the issuer, as opposed to the sub and the prime. And so, policing the sub is the job of the prime. So if there was substandard work being done, then the, and this was something that we recognize, then that would, if this was something recognized, then that would be policed with the contractor, with, per the contract, per the RFP, what was stated in the RFP as the specifications for the build.
And so, hence the Program Management Office, would they have the role of actually making sure the contract, are they going to manage the contract too as well? Are they going to oversee that? The targets, are the targets are being met? The timelines are met?
Yes, but the PMO would be to deal with the prime, again, and the, and to report any issues to the prime, the contractor under the RFP.
Okay. In your experience, what is a reasonable consultancy fee based on the amount of money spent? Because the last thing I want to do is, we're going to spend this money, and it's all going to consultants, less on the construction, right? So, you know, what do you think is a reasonable amount?
I'm, this is, this is, it largely will depend on the scope of the project. This is different than, it's different than building a school, or, so you're dealing with, and the scope of the project is quite large. And so, you are dealing with some highly specialized consultants, if you are dealing, in fact, with consultants. And so, generally, architects and engineers take a portion of the project, of the total project fee. Any additional consultants along those lines, again, you're talking about how, the size and the scope of the project, in addition to anything special that might occur as a result of anything that might come up, environmental, et cetera. So it's kind of hard to put a number out there. Generally, a percentage of the project.
Okay. But 30 million is probably too much?
I don't think so.
You don't think it's too much?
I don't think so. Actually, to clarify, Tina and I were talking about this. I was speaking in error when I was addressing Senator Tellier earlier. When we were discussing this portion of the bill, we were discussing that this amount is to be assigned over the 30 years? It's over the...
Yeah, so it's just like the same.
Yeah, go ahead and answer.
So the 5% is more of our management of the contract, legal issues, making sure their, the contractor we hires is staying, staying with what we planned, as far as our insurance contract, making sure they have the right insurance, making sure maintenance is understood. Say, GPA wants to, I mean, GPA, sorry, GMH would like to paint the building 10 years in, you know, we want to make sure they're ready for that, you know, and all of these legal issues are addressed. We want to make sure that they're maintaining the reserves that they're supposed to have. So all of this to ensure that they're managing their side of the contract. Again, that 5% will be like our legal fees, if there are any issues that they come up to us. Will be our annual maintenance or management of the contractor over the entire project. That's what that 5% management fee is, or GIDEA fee. So again, that would be part of what's currently handled by the existing lease facilities, where there is a management fee as part of additional rentals. So again, every year, we would come in as part of the budget cycle to say, this is the additional rentals, on top of the base rent, the debt service, this is what it's going to cost to have a maintenance, insurance, and other extra costs, as well as the management fee. Because again, we have to maintain the files for the life of the project. So that's what that management fee is.
This is currently a fee that you pay to organizations like the Guam Educational Facilities Foundation, and other CAPFA, lease, any lease-leasebacks. There is no CAPFA or GIDEA in this situation. It would be GIDEA managing the issuance.
Could I get maybe an estimate cost, if we were just to build the hospital alone? Could I get maybe an estimate cost if we were just to build the hospital alone?
I'm sorry, Senator. You said an estimated cost just to build the hospital alone?
Yeah.
Sure. The Army Corps, again, quoted their 760 million. And then if you'd like to factor in some escalation as the prices of construction have gone up of 10%, then the latest amount we were looking at was an 817 million. And that is not inclusive of infrastructure, the infrastructure we were approaching as a total campus, medical campus number of, the earlier I had mentioned that GPA has put out there a number of about 15 million, GWA. The roads have not yet come up with a number.
I'd like to reserve my time should Guam behavioral health, you can make that request.
Noted. Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Blaz, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Prima, Ms. Mindiola, Prima, you, you mentioned earlier that as a pledge for your conversations, you're going to, it is anticipated that you're going to use the ARP funding, right? As the funding source? As a pledge?
The EITC as the funding source, yes, sir. That was authorized, yes, Senator, that was authorized by legislation under ARP.
Okay, so it is not necessarily the ARP. I'm, I'm talking specifically about the $300 million. You can't use that, right?
I'm talking exclusive of the 300, outside of, we were talking about the annual debt service of 35 million, where that would come from. That was pledged on the EITC, independent of the 300 million that the governor has stated that she would like to use for the hospital.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you. You know, throughout this discussion, is one of the things that I've noticed as being common is the consultation and the use of the Army Corps of Engineers. Have we got any formal agreement? Have we structured, or have we come into any formal agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers? It is, it seems as we're, as we're moving ahead and using them, talking about charrette and whatnot. Are we using that?
So the governor has never stopped her engagement with the Army Corps of Engineers. She used the Army Corps of Engineers for the initial assessment of the hospital in 2019. And then she is expected to use them for a planning charrette for the medical campus in its entirety. And that engagement, we are trying to, she's seeking the funding, I believe this was in the news of the Department of Interior, to help finance that planning charrette.
Okay, but in this, at this stage right now, with the consultations that we're, or the conversations that we're engaged with them, it appears as if we're leaning toward using them then as project managers?
It has not yet been determined in what capacity the Army Corps will be engaged, possibly construction management, yes, sir? Senator?
Okay, because my concern here is that the more engaged we are, it comes a point in time where we're going to have to separate between, you know, what we can get out of the goodness of our heart, and when we're going to have to start to pay for things. And at what point is it, you know, at what point are we going to, are we going to get there? Before we cross that bound, that, that boundary, where now it becomes something where we should have, for the services they're providing, we should have procured it, we should have put, gone on as a procurement process? Are we close to that?
Are we what, to that, opposed?
Are we close?
Close to that?
Yes.
Yes, I think we're already talking numbers with the Army Corps of Engineers, Senator.
Okay. As opposed to talking numbers with regard to how much it's going to cost to continue to engage with them, or is that what we're?
Right now, we're just, the engagement with the Army Corps extends to the details of the planning charrette.
And I, I guess we just got to study this a little bit further with regard to, not to say it's a bad thing, okay? I just, we need to cross our Ts and dot our Is when it comes to the last thing in the world we're going to need is to get a, that, we get to a point where we should have gone the proper route of procurement to be able to continue their services, or services of somebody else that's comparable, as opposed to continuing on and then finding out that we owe them, or, and we have no means to pay them legally. So let me just go and look at that a little bit further. I think, you know, I'll save my questions for next round, okay? Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blaz. Senator Rigel, any questions for the panel? Thank you very much. Speaker Terese, you are recognized. Speaker Turlahi. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Byrne, just follow up during our discussion yesterday regarding the governor's visit to DC and the discussions and the US Treasury requesting, or the ask for the 300 million to be set aside for the use of the hospital. If you can expand on that, you were, I'm supposing you were, you were present at this meeting. Was this a Zoom meeting or in-person meeting?
It was an in-person meeting.
And being, being present there, can you help just walk us through on the governor's ask and the Treasury's response to the question that was asked, please?
Yes, Senator. The meeting didn't just cover ARP matters, but obviously ARP matters were a large part of the meeting. The governor, having already considered that a large part of the ARP funding should be set aside to fund the hospital, asked the deputy secretary, is that permitted? And in context, you recall, and there was a fair amount of discussion of this in an earlier hearing, that the interim final rules had been issued, the interim final rules, period of comment had closed, but we don't have, and we still don't have, final final rules. So the governor was asking the deputy secretary of the Treasury, was, would the final rules permit the, this amount to be set aside to fund the hospital under the, under the rules that they expect? And their response was, we haven't got the final rules yet. No one has asked us such a question in any of the previous consultations that they'd had, but that they would consider the question and get back to us. And we're still waiting for, for that response.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And since that wasn't, no one has asked that question, which is, it's good we asked. That's, that's good. But, but at the same time, with that question not being asked from other territories, districts, and states, or tribes, I'm not expecting that to be in the printed version, a the final direction from the US Treasury. But what we're still asking the deputy secretary there is still to, for an exemption, because it sounds like that this wouldn't be in writing with the final version, since no one has asked, but we, we are still pursuing this exemptions, that it's possible that we can, the Treasury Department would allow us to do that. Would that be accurate?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, a great tribute to us all that Guam is out in front and is asking a question that no one else has asked. Maybe no other state or territory has that issue. I personally think they probably do, but they just perhaps didn't screw up enough courage to ask the question that we did. The, I, the context really was, this is a large capital project. Do the rules allow you to spend this, this amount of money on a, on a capital project of such magnitude? And, and that's the question to which we're rating response.
And I understand we're having a follow-up. You'll be having or attending with the governor a follow-up in November.
We intend to do so. We haven't finalized the arrangements yet. But as you point out, we haven't received a response, so we're going to take whatever, whatever means we can to, to get a response, and hopefully a positive response.
Yes, and it's good we asked. We're on the forefront. Why, why not? But I'm just hoping that sooner than later, we can settle this matter in a positive result. With the planning purposes, are you planning in person? Is the governor planning in person or a Zoom conference?
Those details haven't been finalized yet, Senator. And I'm sure it depends a lot on everybody's availability. It, I just think the important thing to note is that, you know, we're, we're actively following it up. It's a, it's a really important project to the people of Guam, so we're giving it top priority. And you may be sure that, that the governor will put in every effort to make sure that we get to where we're trying to get to.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. Senator Turlahi, do you have a point of information?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out that, you know, I just wanted to know who's making the, the cost, the cost analysis, analysis for the design of the hospital. Have we, are we, have we decided what, who's going to build the hospital? Have we gotten any type of design from, because I, I believe that the Army Corps of Engineers is the one that's proposing some of these analyses, you know, as far as the cost and the type of construction that we're going to build. And we do have a definite idea of how much money is coming for, from the ARP funding for the hospital, for public health, and, and the other buildings that we're going to build. On the extension of the cost, I, I am not sure if we have a complete idea of what the additional cost, aside from the cost analysis that's coming from Army Corps of Engineers. So who's, who is spearheading this project in as far as making the design and coming out with the, with the cost of the buildings that we're, that we're going to construct?
Thank you, Senator Turlahi.
Madam Chair, are we on another round? Madam Chair, are we on another round? Another round here?
No, we're not. Senator Turlahi raised a point of inquiry, and so I'm allowing him to ask.
Okay, so that we can do the same as well. Thank you.
Do you have a point of inquiry, Senator Titigl?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I'll let the Senator go first. Yeah, and then if I can, because I thought we were doing questions going in a roundtable.
There's still, there's still time for.
Okay, great. That's good to know. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll prepare. Senator, you're absolutely right. Army Corps has done the assessment as to what the replacement cost of the hospital is with regard to the medical campus. We are engaged with the consultant right now to determine the medical campus needs. We are also doing some preliminary planning work as far as what it's going to cost based on how much space is currently occupied by the three agencies. There is no central, there is no design as of yet for the medical campus. And in order to get a design, you need money. And that's why we're here.
I understand why you're here, but the thing is, you know, we're going on with all different kinds of questions regarding, you know, money coming in and all the things that we need to do.
Senator Turlahi, we will come back to you in the next round because we are still in this round of questioning with Senator Doinas. So we'll come back to you. Thank you very much. Senator Doinas, you are recognized.
Deidre Mazzie, Madam Chair. So I think maybe just two questions that I have. Mel, I think this was asked when the bill was first introduced. And because we're seeing some, a lot of volatility, I think, stateside with regard to negotiations in Congress and the like, how much of this desire, when we pass this bill, or if this bill passes, is also associated with taking advantage of market conditions?
Senator, one more time, I didn't quite hear the end part of your question.
So how much, other than all the discussion that we've had about the medical campus and all of the, the, you know, the, the ideas that are, and concepts that are coming together in terms of, you know, the, the medical campus itself, how much does this bill also, and for the government of Guam's benefit, does this rely on taking advantage of current favorable market conditions?
Interest rates continue to be at historic lows, and so this is a very good time. And municipal issuances have been performing relatively well. This is, also Guam is triple tax exempt. That remains to be a very good, a very good thing, of put, put our, the desire for our bonds at a, there's increased demand, there's generally oversubscription of anything that we go out for. And Guam's ratings are, are good. And so right now, anything that's affected by COVID, such as the airport, is experiencing some difficulty. But, but general issuances and such, we're doing, Guam's financial position is, is, is very good right now for the purposes of the, where we are, where the market is, it's a good time to borrow.
So I just want to be clear on my question. Do you, is it your advice then that this body should take advantage of this at this time and try to move this forward because of that? Because it could become more uncertain going forward?
I think the body should understand the total debt profile of the government of Guam, and consider moving forward what is affordable and what, what can be done. What is affordable and, and, as well as the vision of, of, of the future of the island of Guam. We're not going out to the market to refinance debt. We're not, we're not going out to the market to pay tax refunds. We're going out there to build something, something tangible, something tangible and critical, critically needed. Do you want to do it now, or do you want to wait until actually something happens and the hospital is in an emergency type of situation, and in its even worse type of situation? But all we know about interest rates is what is today. Previous, past performance is an indication of future performance, but 10 years ago, we thought the interest rates were low, and they got even lower, right? And so today, in today's circumstances, this is a good time to borrow. But can I say that this is the best time to borrow ever? Maybe, we, we actually, you know, that's, that's hard to say. Because with good stewardship, the finances of the government of Guam, as they continue to, if they, if, and as they continue to improve, then what happens is your bond ratings improve, and as your bond ratings improve, borrowing becomes even cheaper. And so it's all those things that kind of work together. And building the assets of the government of Guam, GMH is an asset to the government, the building of the medical campus would be an asset to the government of Guam. Again, it's not going out for a bond to finance tax refunds, or. Again, it's not going out for a bond to finance tax refunds or to deal with receivership type issues. It's building an asset. And so given those, I think this is a really, a nice time to go out to the market for the government of Guam. I think you are in a good position to go out to the market at this point in time.
Yeah, that was the purpose of my question, you know, in totality, right? I think we can break down the mechanics and everything else of this bill. I think the need's been demonstrated. I just wanted to shift to the market conditions and what Gita's position was on that. I guess my final question, and this is maybe a question to see if you've asked this question, because I think it's going to be important going forward. There may be a situation, even under a lease situation with the Navy, that any land transactions, when the Navy's contemplating or any other properties, not currently in inventory, would require legislative approval. So maybe I would ask you to make sure you endeavor on that as well. Sides, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. We will.
Thank you, Senator Duenas. Senator Nelson, you are recognized. No questions. Speaker Turelahe.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm, you know, we all support building a new hospital. I don't think any one of us does not. We are just, I'm very actually glad to see that the legislature is being very diligent about asking questions on the details of the financing of this hospital. It is, as was said earlier, one of the largest financing that I've seen. If, it might be the largest if this all goes through. And in addition to the financing, you know, we have to fully consider the authority that the legislature is giving by this bill and what is, what authority it also gives up by this bill. I want to follow up on the recent line of questioning. In the past, Gita testified that bonds might be the less expensive way to finance this project, but they were concerned about our debt ceiling. So we were looking at a leaseback. Does this bill allow Gita to go out for bond financing?
So the financing that we're asking for is a leaseback financing, which in the market and understanding, it does not affect the debt ceiling. But we are, but what we are selling bonds, to the investors, we're giving them bonds.
All right, that's in page 13, 83110A. Is that right? Can you just explain B? B is a similar mechanism used in the LaZon.
Madam Speaker, your question was to please explain B?
Yes.
This is pretty typical language of going out for bonds.
That's for government of Guam going out for bonds.
That's correct. With the exception of the, because it is a lease, leaseback, the lessor is going out, basically, the lessor is taking the place of government of Guam, going out to the market and securing debt service under the following, with the following parameters or with the following...
You see that in B or in A? I see that in A, but what about B?
So B is allowing A, or A will go out for, in the following way with B. These are the instruments that A will secure. So they could do it through...
So nothing in this bill authorizes Gita to go out for bonds? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Despite having discussed earlier that it might be more economical. All right, so in addition, you know, Gita and the government is seeking grants and other sources not affected by this bill for additional financing of this medical campus. So this bill's only intended to finance part of it. Does this bill allow for any other mechanism besides leaseback?
When it talks about tax-exempt bond, taxable bond, and other financing instruments, you're looking at available tax credits that will help finance the project.
Where are you looking at?
So on page 13, the whole use of tax-exempt bond.
All right, but that is the contractor who's going to utilize that.
Right, through Gita. And so Gita, this allows us to do tax credits, whether they're solar tax credits or something that can be helped to finance the project. So, or, I'm trying to think of, what was that tax credit we had before? You know, whether it's new market tax credits or something that could help us finance the building. And again, as we would work with our underwriters, bond counsel, as to what is available out there that could help us secure the financing.
Right, but we're not pledging for that part, right? We're not, we're not incurring any pledge or liability under parts 83110, right?
Right.
That's what I'm trying to confirm. We're not going out for a bond, so we're not authorizing Gita to get a bond, and we're not pledging this money towards a bond or anything else, except for leaseback, which is listed under 83109.
Right.
Right? That's the only authorized use of this $35 million.
Yes.
If you, and we had talked about earlier that if the, we're trying to finance the amount, and now these amounts came from Gita at the public hearing. So, you know, we were talking about a $767,000 that needs to be financed based on a $1.067 billion project, reducing that by the $300,000 ARP money. The $767,000 that needs to be financed requires an annual lease payment of $60 million. This bill only authorizes an annual leaseback amount of $35 million. Gita said they were going to find, you know, the other half somewhere else. But just on the seven, the, we had talked about, I think I had asked, you know, the $60 million annually over time, I thought I got this figure from Gita, was a $1.83 billion project. And if you add back the $300,000, it's over a $2 billion investment that we are making into this property, right? We're going to build the entire campus. If, this is a, you know, one of the questions I have, but I don't want to spend time on it, is that we're putting all this investment into property that we do not own. The other thing is that, so we talked about whether we need this financing for the leaseback, which is the only financing authorized in this bill, whether we need that financing today, or whether we can get that at a different time, or, you know, pass it after we know more of the details. The, Gita had said that the leaseback payments would not be due until completion of construction. The Army Corps also talks about, you know, a five-year period for how we need to keep GMH operating for five to seven years while the construction's completed on the new hospital. So we are making large investments in our current hospital because of that need to keep it running for five to seven years. And so then the Army Corps told us they were going to, you know, that they can do a charrette. The governor's pursuing that. She's willing to pay $3 million on the charrette, to engage them on the charrette. But the charrette, they told us, would take one to two months to compile the reports, and then it would take, to begin the charrette, and then it would take one to two years to complete. So that brings us to, and we need this charrette prior to the design, which of course we need prior to the construction, right? So no RFP for a leaseback can go out any time before, I think, January 2024.
Thank you, Speaker.
You know, or if they're really pushing it, January 2023, and that's still a year from now.
Yes, you're out of time now, ma'am.
If I could just finish this one last question. This is, it's just that, that, so that amount of time, you know, allows us more time to study this financing, to give them more details on the financing or the plans.
Yes, please state your question.
They talked about that they have $30 million in preliminary projects that they want to use this $35 million pledge for leaseback financing for. And I can't see how we're going to do that if we can't issue the RFP for the leaseback now, or, you know, anytime soon, until we have the design, which will not be done for at least one to two years. And the $30 million in projects outside of the leaseback is just simply not authorized in this bill. So I would object to any use of this $35 million for any of those. And we are sitting on $300 million dedicated to this project in ARP funds that is sitting in a bank. Why are we going to pay interest and invest or finance infrastructure? I think we can spare ourselves those interest costs by simply using the ARP funds for any preliminary costs. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we will now entertain a, yes, go ahead, Senator Sinagastin.
Madam Chair, I think we completed the two rounds. I propose that we recess until 3 o'clock because we have a site dedication at 1:30.
Sure, we will.
Senator? Can I just respond to my earlier statement to Senator Ada?
Please proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. Senator Ada, earlier I mentioned that the CDC Public Health Lab, the alternate site, would be, if not Eaglesfield, the Mingilao Building, or where the building is existing. At this point, that facility is not an option at this time. So the ideal location for the CDC lab is the Eaglesfield, as well as the Division of Environmental Health, they are building a main facility, and that building or facility will also be built at the Eaglesfield. So I just wanted to correct that statement.
Okay, thank you for that. And just to follow up again, just to ensure that any funding for infrastructure that is allowed by these grants, so that later on down the road, we're not subject to pay that back because it was not approved by the grantor, right?
Yes, I will go back to the office and get that information and get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Speaker Turelahe, have a...
I would ask that notwithstanding the rules that were laid down earlier, that we allow another round of questioning while we have the panel here, and so that they don't have to come back. And so that, just because in light of the amount of financing that is being proposed in this project, over a billion dollars in investment that we are going to be making into this property, that we be allowed at least one more round of questioning. And I note that the behavioral health is not here yet, so those questions are still not answered, but at least for these, this panel, so they don't have to come back, if we just allow one more round.
There's been a motion, notwithstanding the rules of the Committee of the Whole, to extend one more round of questioning. Senator Sinagastin?
I just have a comment on that one. As long as we all understand, number one, as the clock ticks, we're not going to be able to vote on any other bills until Monday, as long as we have that understanding. There's no way I would support that, because we still have another bill, and there's still engrossment. So I just want to make sure we all understand that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to object to a second, a third round, but a reminder, the amendments have to be in. We're not going to keep dragging the clock. Get your amendments in now. I don't know how many amendments are in right now, but we're supposed to end it, and the amendments, we go to the third round. I'm not going to object to it at this point. I want to give everybody a shot, but we need to minimize the time. Five minutes is a lot, so. Madam Chair?
Okay.
And to my colleagues.
Are there any objections to add an additional round of questioning for the panel? Okay, motion passes. We will continue with questions, beginning with Senator Rogel. Do you have any questions for the panel? Senator Rogel, do you have any questions for this panel?
No questions, but I'd just like to make a comment and a request to the chair in terms of the order of the way we go. I noticed that normally in the Committee of the Whole, we start with the back row and then go up to the front row. Can we rotate it to make it fair and sometimes start with the front row and then go to the back row? That way, the people in the back row have more time to think of questions, et cetera. And if we do it on a rotational basis, where we take turns in which row goes first, then I think it's fair for everyone.
I'll take that suggestion, Senator Rogel. Thank you very much. We will begin with Senator Moylan. Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Duenas, do you have any questions for the panel? Oh, thank you very much. Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will yield the rest of my time to the speaker.
Speaker Turelahe.
Thank you, and I'd like to correct, I think I was saying earlier, $767,000, but it's $767 million, sorry about that. And yeah, to get up to a billion. And I think, is that correct, Mel, right? With financing of the, you know, $60 million a year, we're looking at, did we calculate 1.83 billion, right? That's 2 billion. All right, so my other questions are, does this bill, okay, so in addition to the pledge of $35 million, the bill, I mean, for the leaseback, talks about in section, on page 15, section 83111, hospital IT and building management system. And it looks like these are going to be included in the leaseback. So the person who's constructing the building is also going to be given the contract for the IT and the building management systems. And so we are also going to be paying financing costs on those as well. And, you know, we had this discussion on the, when we were talking about Simon Sanchez. We broke it all up so that we would, you know, cut down on the construction costs by separating the design from the construction contracting. So I'm just curious, why is that, you know, prudent to finance those, pay interest on IT and utilities? Meaning, we're going to pay interest on them paying our power, water, and sewer, telephone cable bills? I don't know, that's how it looks to me. The other question is on 83104. That was brought up earlier. That's where it says there's an outright appropriation in this bill. So this appropriation, there's no language here that ties it to the $35 million pledge of financing. And so this appropriation, it says 5% of the total cost is hereby appropriated to Gita. That's a $30 million obligation, I think the government of Guam's going to have to come up with. It doesn't say it's going to be taken out of anything else. Section B says there's a $1 million, is, $1 million is hereby appropriated to Gita from the general fund for commissioning a detailed reuse study. And so those two appropriations, to me, are on top of this financing. And as we've talked about with the EITC, you know, if we pass this financing bill and the EITC... the EITC gets, you know, put into a trust fund, then GIDEA could deal with that. But if we pass this bill and we're mandating these appropriations go out from our general fund, I believe that will impact our budget, because we have supposedly budgeted all of the general fund. So part C is my question. C is, for the services of a program management office, we're gonna use part of the 30 million? Program management office. This is one of the things that the Army Corps also talked about. It's like a program, I mean, a project manager, that's how I understand it. And they had also offered their services for that. They said at a cost, they never told us the price, but I'm thinking that this is something that really doesn't have to be included in this finance bill, and that you can decide later, and you know, come to us if you need us, for how to finance the project manager after we have got the shiret, right? The shiret's supposed to be the plan, and then you would have a better idea of your working relationship with Army Corps at that point, and who you might need, based on what our needs are, our design, and for the project. And I'm wondering, so GIDEA, in your enabling act, or I didn't look, are you authorized to receive land on behalf of the government of Guam? You're going to receive the ownership of, or the license of the property from the Department of Defense?
No, I believe the license would be to the government of Guam.
Okay. And then the government of Guam is going, okay, so we will be, all right. Okay, so my biggest concern is that, yeah, is that the timing doesn't seem to match what's being said here today. It's like if, if the Army Corps and leaseback, you know, proposals, both are telling us that it's going to take five years to construct a new hospital, then, you know, tying up 35 million to pay the leaseback is not necessary today. What's necessary today may be financing for preliminary projects. But then again, I think we don't need to finance those preliminary projects if we have the $300 million already, because with financing, we're paying interest, and that's where the costs come in, right? But if, if it's infrastructure, I mean, yeah, I'm hoping, we're talking about water, sewer, power, that we can get roads, that we can get those done with our regular resources, ARP resources, other infrastructure resources that might come through from Congress, or the, what is it, that the delegate pledged, 345 million in funds as well for the hospital. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Speaker Turahi. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this question's for GIDEA. So in regards to the debt service, if we are going to set aside 35 million and it's going to cost 60 million, is there a way we can bring down that cost so we can afford it? So I think that's the issue, the biggest issue for me.
Well, the 60 million that was discussed in the public hearing was inclusive of all three facilities, in addition to the infrastructure and other costs. And it was, as well as an insurance and maintenance reserve of 25%, the insurance and maintenance reserve was a rough assessment. And so can there be savings derived to bring the 60 million down? Yes, all public health, Guam Behavioral, could build smaller buildings, or be deferred to a different point in time. Again, the active, the aggressive search for grants can also help. Public Health, we looked at 100 million, but they're building a $32 million CDC lab without any, you know, without any money being used in this, in this transaction. So it looks like the likelihood of grants is very high, so it's probably more likely to prioritize projects than it is to prioritize trying to bring the, reduce the price tag on all three, or as it stands.
Okay, thanks. So can you, because I, in my discussion, or at least in the bill, it says GIDEA can borrow up to 7%. And so can you explain what that means to the cost of this project?
So when we come, go to the market, we're borrowing 30, 35-year bonds. When we borrow the bonds, the short bonds, or the first five years, are usually like the one and a half, 2% bonds. But when you're borrowing long-term, 30, 35 years, your rates can go up, again, depending on what the market is, and we feel that having a cap of 7% should allow us to get those bonds, even though we feel that the final interest rate, which is the blended rate, will probably be around 5%. So the, when we did the JFK refinancing, just in...
A couple months ago?
No, that was October 2020. We, you know, we get rates, again, from 3% up to like 6%, but the final all-in cost to the government came to 4.93%. That was for a 20-year bond, we're looking at a 30-year bond, because we've already completed 10 years. This was initially financed in 2010. So again, when you're talking long bonds, we say the 7% cap to allow us to finance for the entire term, but the final rate, blended rate, will be estimated about 5%.
Can you provide the body, how you calculated that amount that appears on the presentation that you had for 60 million debt service? Would that be possible to get that?
It can be done on Excel or a financial calculator, not a regular calculator.
Okay. Yeah, can you provide that breakdown? Would it be possible to get that?
Like an Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay. Or the, this?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I can get a copy too. Okay. So the, I guess, okay, this question is for Department of Public Health. So your CDC lab, what is a timeline for that? I know there's a grant for that, and it's, yeah, what is a timeline for that to be done?
So the CDC lab at 32 million, the estimated timeline is undetermined at this point. I know that they were looking at, they do have the design in place, I think they're working with APHL, I'm sorry, don't understand the acronym for that, but in terms of construction, I don't have that information, but I can get back to you.
But with the grant itself, is there a designated time in which the lab is to be built, or started?
So from what I understand, there's two funding sources, one is from DOD, one is from DOI. The one from DOD is open, and there's no timeframe. I didn't get information on the funding from DOI, if there's an estimated timeframe to use that funding.
Sorry, can you repeat when the timeline for DOI is?
So I don't have the information for the DOI funding, as far as the timeline to use that funding.
And what is the breakdown cost, or at least amount, grant amounts for each of those sources?
13 million from DOD and 19 million from DOI. I know that September 30th of this month was a deadline to turn in some information for the grant, and so I think, you know, moving forward, they will provide, I guess, additional details in terms of the timelines, once this grant has been, so this grant was submitted since May, I believe, so we were a few months ahead of the deadline for that.
So are there contingency plans to build this? Should we, yeah, should this project be on hold, or the funding doesn't come in, in time for, for the timelines to expire?
So the, the location to build the CDC Public Health Lab is going to be at the Eaglesfield location, the, or property, the, that was the information that was provided to me, in terms of the, the funding source and the deadlines or the timelines to be able to use that funding. I know that with DOD, there's no timeframe. I'm not sure about DOI funding, but I can provide that information to you at a later date.
Okay. So with the grant, did it specify a site when you did the grant application?
I don't have that information, Senator.
Okay, I appreciate the follow-up.
Thank you.
So just to confirm, so the debt service of 60 million is all-encompassing, or are there other costs on top of that? This question's for GIDEA.
Yes, that was all-encompassing, GMH, Public Health, and Guam Behavioral.
And the infrastructure for all. As far as like utilities, so in, it could potentially be higher based on the annual negotiations on what the cost of, it could be?
If I could, and I did this sheet, so let me explain it. What we said was, the total estimated cost would be 1 billion. We knew that the governor was willing to commit the 300. That means we would either have to finance or find grants for up to 767 million. If we did that based on 30 years at 5%, that would cost us 60 million. But because we feel confident that we can secure grants, and we have evidence where grants have been given for facilities, like a healthcare, healthcare facilities, we're confident that if we borrow, if we only borrow like five, you know, up to 600, then we would be able to get the rest from grants. But if we didn't have the access to grants that we have today because of COVID, you know, all of the emergency response grants that are becoming available, we would have to dedicate 60 million to finance the building, but because of where we are today, what, what is going to cost the government, a billion dollars, may just actually cost us 500 million, because that's the only thing we're really financing. I hope that kind of tells you where the 60 was coming from.
Okay, so maybe if I can ask the question another way. So how much grants do we need to bring down the cost to 35 million from 60?
So you, well, we, we're already bringing it down from 60 to 35. So right now, we're hoping to get the balance with grants. And again, we have evidence of different agencies that have provided that, as well as Department of Defense, that may be responsive. So that's where we are today. And again, the governor had gone out in July, putting out her request to all of those agencies, saying, I know your budget cycle's coming up, this is important to Guam and the region, and so hopefully in the coming months, we should have a good idea of where those grants. But we did demonstrate to them, this is what the government's putting in. Can you help us through grant funding on balance?
If we were to get $300 million in grant, would that bring the annual debt service down to 35 million?
The less you borrow, the less you pay.
Yes, so if the goal is to get it at 35 million, so how much grant money do we need to have to bring it down to 35 million from 60 million?
Maybe 200, 200 million?
And that's just for the hospital?
I would say, well, okay, the way that I would kind of start this off, I would, or if, if 500 is what we have, 500 is what we have to work with, and then 300 million is what the governor has pledged, that's 800 million. With 800 million, we can get ourselves, then we'd need another, we need the cushion, we need the additional. Whatever grant funding comes in, we'd be very aggressive about public health and Guam Behavioral, well, health and wellness grants, but I would say, infrastructure for all is a, is a must-have. And then GMH, kind of addressing earlier what Senator Brown had said, you know, and what I had shared with her, you build what you can afford. So the aim would be 200 million, 200 million or so for infrastructure, GMH, and anything in addition to that would be for public health, Guam Behavioral.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Ada, do you have any questions for the panel?
No questions, Madam Chair. Just like to thank the panel for being here today and yesterday, and for giving up their time to be with us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Sajdus Masri. Senator Tadej, you are recognized.
Just trying to pull up the spreadsheet with regards. So the last question that was asked, I just wanted to clarify, just for the hospital alone, if we were to just to do the hospital alone, which is 817,300,000, in order to get to that 35 million annually to pay out, how much funding do we need?
So again, we're, we're saying that 35 million, based on being conservative, would yield us about 500, at least 500 million.
Okay. So if you're just looking at the hospital and infrastructure for all, then you would still need probably about 60, if the governor uses her entire 300 million specific to this project and not public health-related or Guam Behavioral-related type projects, if she pledged the whole 300 million, then you would still, you would potentially need an additional 60 million or so. An additional how much?
Maybe 60, possibly 60 million.
Okay. Now, when you say infrastructure all or other costs, is that the 50 million that you set aside? Is that what you're talking?
Yes, the, specific to the worksheet that we provided, 817 plus the 50 million for infrastructure.
Speaking of grants, have, how far are you in talks with the military DOD in sharing any kind of, you know, finances or assistance to the new hospital, considering, you know, they're going to be using the hospital? I mean, even if it's not directly military, if they don't go to the Naval Hospital, we have people here on the military buildup that would go to our hospital, so other than Naval Hospital. So are you in talks right now with DOD on, on sharing the cost?
Thank you, Senator. I've not been a part of those talks, but I can't speak for the governor if she has been a part of those talks.
Well, you talked about veterans, you know, being able to utilize the hospital too, so that arena right there gives the ability, you want to talk on that, Lillian?
Of course, Senator Tadej. The governor has been in communication with the veterans to see what funding they can, we can access, but yes, because of the population of the veterans, about 28,000 of them, they have expressed their, their concerns with regards to the services that are currently available on island. Many of them have to get, go off island, or, you know, have to get the authorization from off island, so we're trying to also meet their needs. And, you know, we are gonna earmark in our plan, earmark some space for the veterans inpatient-wise, plus outpatient clinics, and so, you know, to help fund for that type of service for that population, the governor has been in communication with the federal partners to then get some funding to help us with that.
Okay, but we don't have a number that we're trying to, I think we should ask for that number, and not just wait to see what they're gonna give us, you know, and so, okay.
Well, we're also in communication, if you don't mind my adding, we're also in communication with the Veterans Office here, in terms of just the logistics, if we do have these services available inpatient, you know, how is the hospital gonna build for those? So those are all parts of the communication that we're, we're having with the veterans.
Okay, thank you, Lillian.
Thank you.
Thank you. With for GIDEA, once, if this bill were to pass, and there are options, obviously, many options, one to borrow on the bond, one to, you know, leaseback, do you have a plan, you know, on exactly how you're going to do this? I mean, are you going to take this amount of money from, let's say, you know, we know we have a debt ceiling, so are you planning on to borrow, let's say, 100 million, and then do leaseback on this? Are you planning, do you have a structural plan for us to see what you're going to do? Are you planning, do you have a structural plan for us to see what you're going to do?
Not at this time, there's still, it's still in the planning stages.
It's very difficult, you know, I mean, like Speaker said earlier, none of us, I mean, I've been an advocate for building a new hospital. You know, I put out a legislation to build a task force, to build a new hospital. You know, I know the importance of it and rightfully so. Our community deserves it. It's been, it's 40-plus years old. And if you look at the average length of a hospital in the U.S., they already start renovating, more than renovating, they start building a new one. And it's obvious, this hospital in the first place wasn't even meant to be a hospital. So you can add another decade on to that. So there's no doubt about how we feel about putting a new hospital together. But we also have to be conscious of not rushing this through right now. I mean, there's talks going on that needs to be done. There's 300 million dollars that we still don't know if we can utilize. And if we do utilize this money, then it should be used for the planning stages, the Shrek that we have to provide that funding for. Because even the Army Corps of Engineers told us that we would shoulder it. DOI is not a guarantee, you know, to shoulder that funding. So we can utilize that money right now to, for the preliminary, you know, movement. We have to even consider if DOD returns the land back to the government of Guam, would it's going to be an outcry and people who own that property who might want to be compensated for it? There's additional funding. I just think if we're going to move forward to one of the largest, the largest borrowing from this government of Guam, or lease back, the largest, I think it was said earlier, it was only 500 million, a little bit over 500 million that this government has moved forward on. This is almost a billion, a billion. And even if we don't put public health and the other Department of Behavioral Wellness into the mix, it's like 800 million dollars. Do you see a rush in getting this legislation passed if already the task force has been put in place to put the plan together, to go ahead? And right now, you're currently going out and seeking federal funding. You're trying to find areas that can help support this hospital. You're doing that currently. But without knowing really when that money, the EITC that's going to be obligated for it, without knowing that's coming in and the situation that we're in right now, don't you think that we should at least in this legislation, have a plan be presented to the legislature before approving anything moving forward? Again, I bring up the fact that you said earlier, Mel, that the cart before the horse. We don't want to do the cart before the horse. And please, don't get me wrong, you guys have been doing the work. I've gone to those meetings. I've seen you have separate subcommittees working on different aspects. But unfortunately, it's not in front of this legislature that has to approve this hospital. And my time is up. But I thank you very much for being here and continuing the hard work on the end result, the goal of building a new hospital, which we definitely need. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tiede. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And other than the 300 million dollars that the governor has stated that she is going to set aside in the ARP funds for the hospital, is there any anticipation of any more of that ARP funding going to be used to set aside for behavioral health or for public health?
Senator, thank you. The governor has only mentioned 300 million. She hasn't indicated anything else.
Okay. Mel, if this, assuming that this bill passes next week, okay? It's on the governor's desk and she, you know, she signs it. What's your next steps?
We would start a draft of the RFP.
RFP on what?
RFP for the lease-leaseback.
Based on what?
We would, of course, wait for the license for the land. And once we receive the license for the land, we'd start the draft of the lease-leaseback for the hospital, depending on the amount available at the time that we start the draft. So as of today, if we're looking at the amount pledged by this body, as well as the 300 million that the governor, we know what we can afford. We would probably come together with the parties, with the task force, et cetera. And we'd say, what is phase one, what are we going to go after? Let's say we're going to do the RFP for the lease-leaseback specific to GMH and the infra, how do we tie in the infrastructure work for the medical campus, plus the hospital first? Then we get going on that. As we, there's a number of studies, there's the infrastructure work, there's a number of studies that need to be done. We would articulate in the RFP whether that's expected to be done by the company, by the respondent, or we would make the determination among ourselves if that's something that will be done in advance of issuing the RFP. So the studies or the RFP, one or the other. But I would have to confer with the task force as well as the governor as far as pressing this forward.
So are we funding a study or we're funding a hospital? Are we funding a study or are we funding a hospital?
You're funding a hospital.
Yeah, but.
Or while you're funding the medical campus. When I say study, Senator, I'm not talking about like, I'm talking about soil survey, archaeological surveys, things along those lines. These are all site prep type of work that need to be done. Now, whether that'll be done.
So we do have already a place, so if this is going, we do have, it's all set. We can go to the market next week or two weeks from now and say, we're all set. We're going to do a soil study on this spot.
First is the property, first is the property. And then there's the list of studies, surveys, et cetera, prep work that needs to be done. Then the task force will determine what source of funds will pay for what aspect. So if we're doing, if we're teeing up the RFP to say the RFP will take care of everything but the infrastructure, or the RFP will take care of the electrical power grid in addition to the construction of the hospital. So there's quite a lot to be done.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's quite a lot to be done, but can you, you have to agree, Mel, in order to be able to be able to conduct these studies on what soil you're going to, you're going to study and, you know, and what power grid you're going to tap? You're going to need the land.
Yes.
And when are we getting the land?
October was the, and October was the date, I believe, for the, projected date for the license.
October was the projected date, and so we don't even, so we're just going to go ahead and accept the license without reviewing as to what the intricacies are and the nuances are. I, I'm just kind of concerned that we're going to just going to jump right into this and not even do this, our necessary diligence, just for the land itself. I mean, we're talking about property that, I don't want to get into this, but we don't own. And then there's going to be a lease or an agreement on it for whatever reasons. And that's a whole other discussion, but I don't think, what I'm probably saying, I don't share the same confidence that we're going to be able, although the paper will be there, you know, to sign by October, that we should just sign it as soon as we get it on our desk. We got to do our own due diligence on this. And I ask this because, again, it goes back to, what are we going to be presenting to, to, you know, as our package? And where are we going to get, you know, I mean, conducting all the studies? What if the study says, you know, that there are contaminants there that we first have to mitigate? Okay? Or that the infrastructure that is necessary is going to cost more than this? I, my uneasiness here is, it's not having, not even half a plan of, you know, whether or not we're going to have to build this campus here or whether we're going to have to build the hospital facility on another place. So that's where my uneasiness is in this whole process. And as much as we like to move forward and we continue to move forward, you've got to understand our concern here. It's not that we don't want to build a hospital. I don't think there's anybody in here that's going to say that. I'm not definitely going to say that. Okay, it's, you know, are we ready to be able to do this? And that's the concern that I have. I appreciate it, you know, I mean, it's, we want to move as, you know, as quickly but as diligently as we can to be able to do this. And, you know, there are many other questions that I may have, but unfortunately, there's nothing to look at. There's nothing, I don't see a plan. And so it's very difficult to be able to come up with the questions that are necessary for this. You know, when we, when we talk about, you know, and I appreciate and I agree, when we talk about building a fire station or a police station, go out to bond market or build schools, normally there's a, we're looking at plans. We're looking at how it's going to be done. Here is a good example of the concern that was initially brought up. This may be, you know, a, you know, putting the cart before the horse. I'm done, thank you. My time's up.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Trelawney, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Before I share my thoughts, I just want to thank the panel for coming here today and even more in the following days ahead. And I just wanted to thank Gita. And I just wanted to come out and just point some important things that the Speaker had mentioned. She had mentioned that we're pouring all this money into a property that we don't even own. And I agree with Senator Blas when he come out about some of the delays that's going to happen because we're going to have to, the property, once the property is released to us, we're going to have to go out there and check if there's any contaminants that might affect the construction of the hospital. And let me just say that I fully support really just the construction of a public health center and the hospital. But we need to be more cautious about the things that we talked about. We mentioned about an RFP. I would think that, I used to own my own construction. And I think, when they mention, when we mentioned something about an RFP, I don't, I don't think an RFP would come in until probably 2024, a lot of part of 2023. And all these things that we're talking about is, we need to really look into not only the cost and everything else, but like the additional, the money, you know, we're talking about 600-some million. And then I'm hearing that we might need a cushion of at least 200 million aside from 600-some million. So these are the things that I'm concerned about. And hopefully, I know that, that, you know, before even, we even start to do an RFP, we need to hire those consultants and those architects that have the experience of building a hospital. And I would think that you're not going, you're not going, we're not going to just hire one or two consultant. We're going to have to have a consultant for the infrastructure itself of the hospital and also some of the things that we need to carry on while the construction is going on. And that's all that I'm concerned about. And I just want to thank Gita for really pushing forward. And we need to just really, just take a look at the, some of the, take a look at some of the things that we need to do before we even consider working on the construction. And I want to thank the Speaker because we need to listen to what the Speaker had mentioned about the things that we need to really consider in as far as going forward with this project. And I want to thank you all for being with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Trelawney. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Actually, I don't know if it's going to be a question or just a bunch of comments. Number one, for GMH's site, Lillian, what was the clock they put on you from the Army Corps of Engineer when they evaluated you two years ago?
It did not cost us anything, Senator.
Clock, the clock, the clock ticking. That you got to do something to fix the GMH or you got to build a new one? What was the clock they gave you?
They didn't give us a timeline on it, but, you know, there were some serious concerns.
There were some concerns. Okay, the reason why I'm asking that, Lillian, is that number one, when I was in the Department of Education's Board for many of my colleagues, I don't know if you were a senator yet, or you were a senator then, the Army Corps of Engineer gave a clock on JFK. They said if you don't fix it, you don't maintain it, you don't do something to take care of it, in 10 years, it'll be condemned. And exactly 10 years later, it was condemned. And then what did the GovGuam have to do? Go in there and figure out a way to find the financing to build it. And when they were building it, it's no different than what they were doing with Simon Sanchez. Did we have a plan? Did we know what the structure is going to look like? No. Did we know what the infrastructure impact was? No. Many facets of building and financing don't exist until you find a source of funding. No different with, other than GMH, no different with public health or behavioral. When we talk about the property that they're considering, Eagles Field, I think that's the name of it, Mangila? One of the biggest things that I think are, the people of Guam don't realize is that it's not being returned to Guam, to Governor Guam. It's going to be licensed and possibly leased to GovGuam. And there's no, there's no statement stating that the hospital or the health center, which I'm the author of this bill, is saying it's going to be there. This bill is talking about a financing ability, is to provide the financing source. And as everybody was talking about the EITC earlier, if you looked and if you had paid, and I'm not going to assume you didn't pay attention to the budget, the budget talked about using local funds. EITC funds is expected, just like CTC and the additional tax credit came in, it was in advance. If it came in advance, then of course it's going to go into a trust fund. Not a problem, not an issue. If the EITC comes in in a reimbursement, then of course GovGuam will pay it upfront and then we get reimbursed. If it doesn't, it comes in advance, then so be it, it's in advance. The funds that we're dedicating, the 35 million, is specifically local money. It's Gov, it's our people's money that we've been in practice for the past decades in using to pay EITC and CTC. So nothing new. My concern for my colleagues and for the people of Guam is that number one, this bill is to identify a financing mechanism. If there's federal grants out there, thank God. If Delegate Sinikas comes true and he gets 345, the cost goes down, 345. If the governor is blessed and approved by the United States government that you can use the 300 to throw into the building of the health center, thank God, let's move on. I'm just concerned that if the Army Corps did not give you a clock for GMH, because right now, there is a clock for public health. People may think that, oh, no, they always have money to keep them housed. There is a clock, because when money becomes scarce, where are they going to go? It's going to come back to this body. We need to find them a permanent home or semi-permanent home, and we need to take care of GMH. For many of you, when GMH was closed, the old GMH, and the Governor Guam took over the current GMH, it was a medical center. Catholic Medical Center. I went there. I went there when it was down here in Agania. I went there when it was up at now GMH. Some of you probably never went to the Catholic Medical Center, unless you're as old as myself and Pito. But in all the plans that have to happen, if you don't have money to back you to make the plan become something to look at, you can forget it. We can talk about everything in the world. And when we talk about the total cost, it's like borrowing for a house. If you borrow for a house 300,000, if you pay the interest and everything else, of course, it's going to grow. it's going to grow. Doesn't, doesn't require a lot of intelligence to figure that out. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Rogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question, I guess it would be for Gida. There's a section of, of the bill that identifies the percentage to be given to Gida to, part of it is, or a major part of it is to pay for the, to pay for a PMO, right, to hire PMO. So my question is, is that PMO going to be different from the Matrix Design Group that's currently been doing some work on it?
I believe the PMO addition was from the last draft, and I believe I'm not, we, we did not ask for the PMO. I believe the PMO is akin to like the construction manager from here going forward. So Matrix Group, what they're doing is, they're doing a, engaged in a current hospital study to assess the, or they're engaged, I'm sorry, in the medical action plan that assesses the needs of the healthcare system, Guam Memorial, as well as public health and, and Guam behavioral, and their needs for the future. So it's not a PMO, it's, Matrix at the moment is engaged in a medical action plan, a, a study, if you will, an assessment of where we need to be when we start the design process and all of that.
Okay, thank you. Also, just sort of adding to some of the comments from, previous comments from some of my colleagues, the concerns sort of about the site in Manila. Now, let me preface this by saying that I totally agree with having it in a central location. You know, being someone who lives down south, I think it's only fair to have it in a centralized location, especially, you know, right now it takes 40 to 45 minutes to get to GMH from my house, and that depends on traffic. So I definitely agree with it being in a centralized location. But there are some concerns with regards to it coming from DOD and being transferred over to GovGuam, and my concern is, will there be any guarantees that DOD can provide us in transferring that, that there's no hazardous materials on the site?
Yes, that is part of what DOD is taking care, they have committed to taking care of the cleanup of the site prior to transfer, so that when it's transferred, it's in a state that it's usable.
Okay, thank you. And a question that I'd like to ask for both you, Gida, for the Gida Administrator as well as the GMH Administrator. If we don't pass this bill now, what are some of the consequences? I guess I can begin with the GMH Administrator.
Well, Senator, thank you for that question. We continue to provide the services, the operations, we can't stop, we can't close the door, you know? So even if you don't pass this, this bill, you know, we will continue the, the services of the, the hospital. But I just wanted to kind of, if I may take a few minutes to piggyback on Senator Sinagastin's passion about building the hospital. We really do need it, and I understand, and I, I'm thankful that you support our quest to build a new hospital, and I understand the concern of the finance, but it's not going to get any cheaper if we wait. The cost will continue to rise. And so the end game is that it's an investment. The cost, yes, but it's an investment for the people of Guam. It's going to really make the healthcare services of the island advanced and improved, and it can become a regional facility. So that again is an investment, people can come to Guam and get the services. And another thing is that we can open up the opportunities for research. We have seen already what this COVID has done, and the CDC lab, we need to have it. So maybe that's going to be the first phase for this campus, is that CDC lab, and then the hospital, and then the other facilities can come later. But it's an investment, and that's the end game. Thank you.
Ms. Mendiola?
Yes, thank you, Senator, for that question. I think if this is the body that has the courage to finally get it done, we've been, the, the legislature has been talking, every legislature for as long as I can remember has been talking about building a hospital. And it would be very nice if it's done today. Some of the pros of getting it done today, again, earlier I had touched on the market conditions, it's a good time to go out to the market. But aside from that, there is pledged funding from the governor as well, but it can't be done alone. 300 million isn't going to build a new hospital at the end of the day. It's going to get us nothing. It's, I mean, rather, it's not going to get us the hospital, right? We can, I think we can all acknowledge that. And I think that, so we have this access to this money today, there's a very high reliability of this access, access to this money. There's an unprecedented amount of grant funding that's flowing into communities around the U.S., much of which can be channeled into this project as well. So there's value for the money that you're getting. And I think that by, by taking care of this today, this is something that you can utilize to leverage in your grant applications. You can say, the government of Guam has committed these resources to our medical, our medical system, and therefore, we'd like to ask for this money. It gives you a stronger, a more solid footing when you're going after federal monies, to say that you have pledged money of your own in addition to build with regard to the resources. To me, that's the, probably the biggest reason why it's a good thing to do today as opposed to kick the can down the road in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. So with that, I would like to end with a, a few comments. After hearing all the discussion and doing some research, I know there's a lot of concern about this idea of putting the cart before the horse. Interestingly enough, I looked up the term charrette and its origin. And charrette is actually a French word that means cart. So in essence, doing the charrette first is putting the cart before the horse. And I think in this case, finding a funding mechanism is the horse which will pull the cart through to the end. So with that, I'd like to say I agree with you, Ms. Mendiola, that I think now is the time that we address this situation instead of kicking the can down the road. And let's put the horse, this funding mechanism, in front of the charrette or the cart. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rogel. We will now dismiss the panel and come back at 3:00 p.m. today. And we ask that your amendments be prepared before we come back into the Committee of the Whole. So we will return at 3:00 p.m. We are in recess.